I'd like to call the caucus to order. First piece of legislation is from Finance for emergency passage. It's accepting a bid for our liability insurance for the village. We're going to pass that. The bill is open, I believe there are two bids. Any comments?
Just like to see it passed tonight.
Okay, anything else? Okay, the second one's from Finance, and that's a resolution accepting the alternative tax budget in the form of authorized by the Trumbull County Budget Commission pursuant to higher revised code and emergency. Comments on that?
I'd like to see that passed also tonight, Mayor.
Any other comments? Okay, third from Council as a whole, it's a final resolution pertaining to the funding of the Palmyra Road resurfacing project. And this is kind of cleaning up. I've got the information, passed it on to Bill, and I think we have to have this passed, but I believe this contract will be let in the next month or two. Any other comments on that?
I'd just like this passed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The fourth one is from Streets, Sidewalks, Public Parks, Buildings, Grounds, General Improvement Committee, and this is to purchase a LED message board out front. There was, I believe, thirty-five thousand dollars in the capital improvements project for this, and this is coming in significantly less. Whatever Council's pleasure is on that.
Is that reflected?
Yes, yes. I would like this passed tonight if all possible.
Okay, are there any other comments on that? Okay, the next one's from the Negotiating Committee, and it's an ordinance, amending and restating ordinance forty-one, two thousand fourteen, for the economic development departments in the village of Lordstown. Comments on that?
I'd like to see this passed tonight.
Okay, any other comments? The next one's from Finance, and it's a resolution authorizing the village of Lordstown to engage the audit of the state to assist the village clerk and the village treasurer to reconcile various accounts within the village of Lordstown for fiscal years two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen and declaring an emergency. Comments on that?
I'd like to see this passed tonight also, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, and the next one's from Finance Committee, and ordinance amending ordinance five dash two thousand fourteen, authorizing the cash transfer of interest earned in the endowment fund into the cemetery fund and declaring an emergency. Comments?
I'd like to also see that one passed tonight.
Okay, are there any questions? Any other comments on that? Okay, none. Are there any questions on the minutes in front of you for approval for the regular meeting held May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen? Okay, none. Are there any questions on the bills? Okay, none. Anything Council would like to discuss at this time? I just have one thing after giving it a lot of thought. A lot of the land we have here in town, you know, everybody talks about the industrial land and everything, but we do have quite a few parcels over on Bailey Road which are affected by wetlands. And, you know, years ago, that was not that bad of a, big of a deal, but anymore, the way EPA and everybody is going, a lot of times you can mitigate some of that land out where you take another parcel someplace else and create a wetland so that way you could fill in a wetland to make the property more feasible for development. And I was wondering if, you know, if the village would want to look this way, whether they would want to approach the property owners, and if somebody would happen to look at that property, you know, I guess the first thing is to delineate it. That's where you sit and point out which areas are actually wetlands, and then after that you mitigate it, and you go like acre and a half to an acre, whether the village would want to look at something like that and approach the property owners because, you know, a lot of that so-called industrial land is, we can't use. Council have any questions on that, or any ideas on that, or?
You mean you're going to try to find an owner to allow his property returned to wetland? I don't quite see why.
Well, I'm not saying find an owner. Maybe, maybe the village has some land, or maybe we could find some land somewhere, or whatever, but, you know, that, I can think of three parcels right now. One's the railroad property, which is at the southwest corner of Bailey Road and Industrial Trace, and then the next one, there's Armel's property, and then there's Masor's property in each one. Every one of those parcels, a lot of our industrial land does have issues with the wetlands, and if we could find property somewhere, or negotiate property somewhere, you know, you could, you know, if you wanted to develop the wetlands, you know, I know that they, there has been some work done on some other parcels, and I'm just saying that we would have to enter into agreement so there wouldn't be any costs on behalf of the village, but I think that, you know, we should at least look at doing something.
If you're talking about starting some dialogue and trying to get owners to do something like that, I don't have a problem with it. I, I do have an issue with us trying to go on private property and doing something like that on our own.
I don't plan on, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Yeah, I didn't think that from what you just said, that that was not your plan. So, yeah, I, I think that, you know, if we can get some dialogue started with some of them and say, you know, if you want to develop your property, this is what will have, what has to be done, and help them along and give them some advice and so forth, I certainly don't have any problem with that.
You know, I'm just throwing this out to Council, is, you know, a lot of times, you know, you can spend a lot of time spinning wheels and you don't get anything accomplished. And, you know, I think that there are three parcels right there on Bailey Road which could be opened up, but like I said, you know, years ago, wetlands wasn't that big of an issue, but anymore it seems to be real big.
So, they've been delineated?
Some areas on that, if you go upstairs and look at the map, you can see where there are some wetland areas. Exactly how much, and, you know, whether they've changed, because, you know, we do have, you know, like wetland areas, we do have some areas which are, I won't say they're perfectly delineated, but they do show that there are wetland areas.
But what I'm saying is generally the owner requests the delineation determination.
Right, well, all I know is if you look at some of the zoning map, Bob, you will see that there are areas which have swamp areas, wetland areas.
Have they been officially determined, is what I'm asking. If they haven't been delineated, the owner of the property would generally request that service.
I will tell you that in the past, when people have looked at the property, they said there are wetland areas. That's why I think that we should be talking to the property owners, and I don't think it should be at any cost to the village, or if there is, that property owner should be able to help offset those costs to free some of that property up. That's, I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion. Okay, nothing else? Is there anything else from Council this time? Okay, now I'll turn off the caucus, and we'll start the regular council meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody. Please, Sam, enjoy a seat for the Lord's Prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In thy name, the Holy Spirit, amen. Pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bill, if I could, another roll call, please.
Mayor Bill?
Present.
Mr. Bond?
Here.
Mr. Mansell?
Present.
Mr. Ratka?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Shealy?
Here.
Mr. Reader?
Present.
Mr. Flank?
Present.
Treasurer George Javelin?
Here.
Solicitor Paul Dutton?
Present.
Police Chief Ramillo?
Here.
Fire Chief Travis Deesnem?
Here.
Parks, Buildings, Grounds, Streets, Commissioner Del Grim?
Present.
Recreation Marty Gibson?
Here.
Board of Public Affairs?
Present.
Minister Plonier?
Present.
Is there a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Jones? Second. Bond? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion for disposal of the minutes for the regular meeting held May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen?
So moved, sir.
Moved by Reader, second?
Second.
Second by Mansell? Comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't here, so I won't do voting.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. And a hand motion for payment of the bills?
So moved.
Moved by Ratka?
Second.
Second.
Second by Shealy? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. I have no mayor's report this evening. Is there a clerk's report?
No report, Mayor.
Is there a solicitor's report this evening?
No report.
Okay, is there a treasurer's report?
No report.
Okay, is the Board of Trustees of Public Affairs a board?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a village engineer's report this evening?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, special reports. Police Chief, now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, submitted my monthly report for May.
Answer any questions if you have any. Any questions for Brett? Okay, Fire Chief Deesnem?
No report.
Any questions for Travis? Parks, Grounds, Buildings, Streets Superintendent, Mr. Graham?
Ah, yes, Mr. Mayor, at the request of the mayor today, he asked for a budgetary number on the two thousand fourteen paving projects. So just a quick look today, we're looking at approximately two billion ninety-two thousand dollars worth of paving that we're going to be doing this year with the local share being somewhere around eight hundred and eighty to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars on top of the local costs.
Okay, thank you, Dale. Any questions for Dale? Okay, Recreation, Marty?
Yeah, of course.
Any questions for Marty? Okay, the Elder Rayland Correspondence is here.
No correspondence, no.
Okay, public remarks. If you'd like to make a public remark after I acknowledge you, please come to the microphone and give your name and address to get it recorded in the minutes correctly.
I would like to.
Okay, Kathy?
My name is Kathy Hood, I live at five sixty-one Salt Springs Road, and I would like to address this article in the paper. I want to talk about the article in the Tribune on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, seventh, from Regina Brevin Mitchell of Warren Fabricating, and they just happened to build power generating equipment. I want to know just why she is so opposed to moving the plant to an area that is already zoned industrial. Could it be that she wants property that's owned by them on this side of town rezoned later? And I'd also like to ask the mayor if you feel you are representing Ms. Mitchell or the people that voted for you. And that's all.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes, Mark?
Mark Kerth, twenty-five, eighteen Ernest Lynch Road. Last fall, I stood up here and asked for some assistance regarding the privacy in the back of my home off the Palmyra Bridge that go over the railroad tracks. Mr. Graham investigated that and advised that there wouldn't be feasible to put any type of pine trees up or something to provide that privacy. I stood here a second time and asked for that issue to still be looked at because I wasn't comfortable with that being the end of the topic. I was assured at that point that I would be asked to attend one of the meetings to discuss it. I never got such a phone call. I was given a message this weekend that said, "It's not going to happen. If you want it, somebody else will want it." I'm not sure anybody else is asking for it, any privacy behind their homes right now, other than me. I have worked for this village as a volunteer firefighter for eighteen years. Some of you people I have assisted personally in the wee hours of the morning, or your parents in the wee hours of the morning. I'm asking for just a little assistance back for the people that are supposed to be serving me as well, and I'm not getting that. I'm getting quickly dismissed. It's not going to happen. I don't think that's fair to me as a public servant that has gone on accidents, fires, ambulance calls, hazmat, every day of the day or night, or every holiday that's ever presented itself. I have represented this village to protect your lives, the families that you love so dearly, as well as my own, and to be quickly dismissed when I ask for just a little assistance, I think is absolutely reprehensible. Thank you.
Are there any other public remarks? Mark?
Mark McGrail, thirty-six, fifty-six, Goldner Lane. As Councilor Mayor, you probably know I've written a couple of emails with regard, and Howard, I'm sorry, I don't have your email address, it keeps bumping back to me. But Council, she leads. Anyways, about the proposed zone change, I was going to read the last one, but I think I'll just cut to the chase here. I just sat down the other day, and it only took me about half an hour to read through the proposal and write down thirty-six inconsistencies that I found within that proposal. The one that is most glaring to me is that, from the presentation I've read and from the presentation I've seen, the company insists that unless that proposed site is rezoned and they're allowed to locate there, they will take this project somewhere else, based upon an agreement apparently that they have with some energy marketer. But, consider this, if they have to move someplace else, whether it's Weatherfield and Isles or anything, wouldn't that abrogate that agreement also? So I, I think that's nonsense, that they can only put it there. There's plenty of other zone property here in the, in the village. And the point I'd like to make about that is, when the, when the plant was first sighted here, we were not a village. It was still a township. When they finally incorporated the village, the founders of the village, some of them I knew, were very thoughtful in putting together a zoning plan. And I believe the reason for that zoning plan, because I knew one of them very well, I'd know for a fact, they were concerned about the growth of industrial property inside the village. They wanted that industrial growth controlled and limited to certain places. I realize that I've heard, you know, "Well, this is only one change," but unless each one of you here plans to live forever and stay on council, there are going to be other people representing this village down the road, and they're going to be presented with the idea, "Well, we did it here, why don't we just allow it there?" You know, and then, "Why don't we just allow it over here?" And this kind of change doesn't happen overnight. It takes years. And, so you put that place out there, and it's not long before someone else is asking for rezoning someplace else. I realize that the prospect of a lot of tax dollars is in the balance here. I do not believe that that's criteria for making this decision. I would ask if anybody could show me within the zoning regulations where it says, "Part of the criteria for making this decision is tax dollars." It isn't. Zoning regulations are put into place to protect the property owners from encroachment by undesirable, you know, businesses, if you're, if you're living in a residential area. This type of thing will change the integrity of our community forever, and I just, what I really think should happen here is, now, first of all, let me just back up and say, I think I'm a hundred percent for the project, well, let's put ninety percent. I don't want the zone changed. I think it's a great thing. It's got to go where it's supposed to go, in industrial area. That's where it should go. And I think that if the council, perhaps even the planning commission, were to sit down and really have some serious talks with this company, I think you could work out the issues that this company may have with, let's say, for instance, wetlands, which I have a question about that because I'm not sure that all of the places, although you pointed out some of the industrial places, do have wetlands, there are some others that I can think of that do not have wetlands, that do not need to be mitigated, and also are quite near these power lines, that they say that they have to be near. So I, I think that this needs to be slowed down, taken very slowly, and not rushed into just for the tax dollars. Thank you.
Are there any other public remarks? Council remarks? Okay, committee reports. Finance, Mr. Mansell?
Yes, Mayor, there's four pieces of legislation tonight from the Finance Committee that I'd like to see passed, and there's one from the Negotiations Committee that I would like to see passed tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for John? Okay, Parks, Buildings, Grounds, General Improvement, Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Reader?
Ah, yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a piece of legislation from the committee dealing with the LED sign that we'd like to see passed this evening, please.
Okay, any questions for Don? Public Safety and Welfare, Mr. Ratka?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as everyone's probably aware of, our sirens started working the end of last week. We're using the backup console, and it seems to be working right now, and State Lee's actually working on our problem that we have in the first console, so hopefully we have it up and running real shortly. That's all I have.
Okay, questions for Ron?
Yes, I have one. I'm glad you said that, Ronnie, because I would have forgot to ask you. When they do the six o'clock tones, I hear the tones in the background that is the actual six o'clock tone that the siren is down by the railroad tracks on Highland is a emergency sound. It's a totally different sound going off at six o'clock.
It shouldn't be.
That one, that's a six speaker one, right?
Yeah.
That is a six speaker one, and that should have the regular tones.
It doesn't have the tones. And I just realized it the other night because I was sitting outside, and I heard-
It started Friday.
I heard, I heard the backgrounds doing the chimes that I'm familiar with, and this one's a whoop, 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 some kind of emergency one.
So the one on Highland?
In front of Mary Jane's house.
Okay.
It's a totally different sound than what I heard in the background from the other sirens.
Okay, any other questions for Ron? Public Utilities, Mr. Bond?
Um, I have no report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, questions for Bob? Transportation, Recreation, and Senior Services, Mrs. Jones?
I have no report, just don't forget the fishing derby and the big picnic coming up later this month.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Okay, any questions for Karen? Okay, Bill, we have the first piece of legislation.
Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance accepting a bid of insurance partners, one hundred Center Street, week one eighty, Charlotte, Ohio, four-four-zero-two-four, for commercial general liability insurance coverage for the period of July first, two thousand fourteen, through June third of two thousand fifteen, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules by Jones, second?
Second.
Second by Mansell? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to suspend the rules.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Mansell, second. Second by Bond? Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
And Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to adopt ordinance fifty-three, yeah, fifty-three, two thousand fourteen. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, a resolution accepting alternative tax budget in the form authorized by the Trumbull County Budget Commission pursuant to higher revised code, section fifty-seven oh five point two-eight-one, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mansell? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ratka? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Jones, second. Bond? Comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to adopt, resolution sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Next, please.
From Council as a whole for emergency passage, a final resolution authorizing the village of Lordstown to operate with the director of the Department of Transportation in connection with a project involving resurfacing of County Road eighty-one, Palmyra Road, and replacing those guardrails lying within the village of Lordstown, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Thank you, motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Shealy, second?
Second.
Second by Reader? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Ratka, second. Shealy? Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to adopt, resolution seventeen, two thousand fourteen. Next, please.
From Streets, Sidewalks, Public, Parks, Buildings, Grounds, and General Improvement Committee, declaring an emergency. An ordinance authorized the village of Lordstown to purchase a stone entrance sign with two LED message boards and installation for Mike's Make Signs, forty-eight, or forty-one Champion Avenue East, North Ohio, four-four-four-eight-three, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Reader, second? Second, Shealy? Roll call, please.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moved by Jones, second?
Second.
Second, Mansell? Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Ratka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero and a's, motion carried to adopt, ordinance fifty-four, two thousand fourteen. Next, please.
From Negotiating Committee for Emergency Passage, an ordinance amending and restating ordinance number forty-one, two thousand fourteen, establishing the authorized strength, hourly wages, and other terms of remuneration for the planning of zoning and economic development
departments of the village of Lordstown effective retroactive to January first, two thousand fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Comments or motions on this piece of legislation?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Mansell, suspend the rule, second?
Second.
Second by Radka, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nAs, motion carried to suspend the rules. There a motion to adopt?
So moved, Mr. Radka.
Moved by Reader, second?
Second.
Second by Radka, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Shealy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mansell?
Yes.
Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nAs, motion carried to adopt, ordinance fifty-five, two thousand fourteen. Next, please.
From Finance Committee for Emergency Passage, a resolution authorized the village of Lordstown to engage the audit of the state to assist the village clerk and the village treasurer